Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Kotsch, Chairman of the North Andover Zone Appeals. Welcome to tonight's meeting. It's Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Before we actually get to the agenda, nobody can see us, so therefore I will take the role. And I'm just going to go in order of the masthead, DePaul Kotsch Jr., that's me, present. Ellen McIntyre.
Present.
Alan Kuscha.
I am here.
Alexandria Jacobs.
Present.
Ron Fagan.
Present.
Michael List.
Present.
Steven Seidi.
Present.
Frank Killey.
I'm here.
And we also have present the zoning enforcement officer, Paul Hutchins. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Brilliant. We will get to any other esteemed guests after we open the meeting by standing and taking the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for suffering through the various electronic delays associated with that. I am going to read the, you know, the opening notice, the COVID notice. So, everybody bear with me. Most of you have heard this before. Those of you out in the public, there will be an important feature in here for how comments into the zoning administrator. I feel like you gotta scratch it out because I'm going to read pretty quickly, and then I will read. Of this particular reading. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's July 2nd, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of North Andover website, www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but effort be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive records of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or even during the meeting to jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. A copy of the application and supporting documents are on file in the Zoning Board of Appeals, 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, may be viewed on the Town of North Andover website at www.northandoverma.gov. And to repeat, anybody has comments, questions, or concerns can email them to the zoning administrator. Her name is Jennifer Battersby, and the email address is J, B as in boy, A, T, T, E, R, S, B as in boy, Y, at northandoverma, that's all one word, dot gov. So jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. That address is found, I think it's also found on each of the notices for the hearings. Nope, perhaps it's not, just on the posted agenda. So with that, we have the first or the first item of substance. The second item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. We have two minutes that need to be accepted. We have October 1st, 2019, and August 11th, 2020. To the extent that anybody in the gallery is curious, the reason we have an October of 2019 set of minutes is because we had a changeover in the zoning administrators and a backlog had developed before she arrived. She has now worked through that backlog, and this is the last of the old stuff. So we will be current from here on forward. So with that, in order to dispose of this, is there a motion regarding the minutes of October 1st, 2019?
I will move to approve.
Who is that making a motion? Is that Ron?
Anytime you don't know who it is, it's wrong.
Thank you, Ron. Is there a second?
I second it.
That sounded like Alan, correct?
It is.
Made and seconded. I will call the rule. I think we've got a full board, so we'll just stick with the full members for now. I'll go up the roster. Ron.
Approved. Aye.
Alexandria.
Aye.
Alan.
Yes.
My name's Ellen.
Was that an aye, Ms. McIntyre?
You actually have both of the meeting, the minutes into this, into this, whatever, approval, just the one.
We're just doing October 2019.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I am also unanimous approval for the October 1st. For the August 11th, last, is there a motion?
I will move to approve.
Ron, Ron.
I will approve.
Ron has. Ron has moved. Is there a minutes of August 11th? The members who second this are Alexandria, Steve, Mike.
I'll second.
Right, motion made by Ms. Jacobs.
Hey, Paul. Hey, Paul, I'm having some audio issues because someone, I think their phone number ending in 41 is having a bit of intermittent sound coming in. If they could mute their mic, that would help a lot, I think.
Okay. Alternatively, perhaps anybody could mute when they are not speaking. That would probably also clean things up a little bit. Thank you, thank you for the note, Bill. So motion made and seconded. I will go up the roll again. Ron.
Aye.
Alexandria.
Aye.
Steve? No, wait, no. Beg your pardon, Steve, I'm sorry. Alan.
I was not present at that meeting.
Which is, I think that's why I said Steve, what a dope. Were there. Are you an aye on that one?
I'm an aye.
Thank you, Steve. Ellen.
I was not present at last month's meeting as well, so I prefer not to vote.
Thank you for helping me out. Looks like, Mike, you're next.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. And I am the last. I'm an aye, so that is unanimous approval for the minutes of August 11th. Next item on the agenda is 369 Waverly Road. Do we have an applicant for 369 Waverly on the line?
Yes, this is Arthur Allen from 369 Waverly.
And are you the petitioner, Mr. Allen, or are you a representative?
I am the petitioner.
Brilliant. Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. This is awkward if you've never been before us before. This is a dreadful solution to a dreadful problem, but hopefully you can suffer with us and get through the germane elements of your application.
No problem.
In order to open the hearing, Mr. Kuscha, would you kindly read the notice?
It would be my pleasure. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Arthur Allen for property at 369 Waverly Road, MAP Point 11, Pascal 52, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195-4.3V, for the purpose of constructing a family suite for the, in the R4 zoning district. Application and supporting materials are available for review by appointment at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass., on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, in the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, DePaul Kotsch Jr., Esquire, and Chairman.
Mr. Kuscha, thank you very much for the dramatic reading. I look forward to a second one tonight. And with that, Mr. Allen.
Yes, sir.
Come to the podium, and why don't you tell us a little bit of what's going on with this application?
So this application is specifically for a family suite below my existing property. I have a, since put an addition on the house years ago, you'll see it in the plot plan. It says proposed addition on the plot plan that has since been, you know, finalized. So this is pretty much a finished space underneath. So what would be, we'd be adding is a bathroom and a kitchenette, and a bedroom with my garage is existing as of this point right now. And the point of this is because, as you know, college costs are so cheap that the kids are able to go and live on their own right off the college, even without a job. So instead of giving them a, giving my son a bedroom on our floor, I figured I'd build him his own apartment and that, so that he could stay home and, you know, help pay his loans off. So it's pretty much adding, it's a finished space now, it's pretty much just adding a kitchenette to it, adding an additional bathroom, and an additional bedroom.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. The format of this will be, so you present the board, perhaps ask some questions.
Sure. No problem.
Just remain at the ready, please. Any questions from the board on this application? What are you noticing?
Well, this is Ellen here. You know me. I mean, I think I already pointed it out prior to that because I looked at the plan really quick, didn't realize it was from a 2004 plot plan. It says proposed, so for me, I'm like, oh, this is proposed, are you adding it? So I just want you to clarify that that is an existing addition that you already did in 2004.
Yeah, yes. That addition has been built. These are, this is actually the plot plan that was submitted to the town for that permit. But that is an existing addition right now. It's been built, it's been done for 16 years now. So, you know, that was the plot plan that I used. I apologize for the confusion on that.
So you mean, no, there's no additional building that's going to be going on with the footprint? There's no change to it? You're just here for a special permit?
None at all. None at all. Everything is going to be within the existing footprint.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, can I draw my two cents in there? Okay, I drove by there this morning, and the way the house is laid out with the back deck, it's connected to the existing floor, existing building, right? Correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, but you're showing the deck connected to the proposed floor plan.
The deck is connected to both. The deck is on the end of the addition. I'm not going to be building the deck. The deck is there already. That's already, that's already a done deal, but the deck.
Yeah, but the deck is really connected to the existing structure, correct?
It's connected to both. It's connected to the addition and the existing structure.
But that's, but that's not what I'm looking at here. Okay, okay, what I'm looking at here is the deck that's proposed, that's attached to the proposed addition.
Correct.
Which is totally untrue. Because the deck is, because the deck is attached to the existing building.
The deck is attached to both. I don't know, are you at the correct house?
I'm looking at it right here. Okay, it says North Andover Plot Plan of Land and North Andover Prepared for Arthur and Gina Allen, owned by Arthur. Okay, okay, so I know what I'm looking at. Okay, okay, we're looking at the same thing, that the point of the deck is 45.5 feet from the property line?
Correct.
Well, I'm looking at something, and I went by there this morning, and that's totally incorrect, okay, what I'm looking at. In my opinion.
I, I.
I don't see it as you see it. I'm sorry.
You're absolutely incorrect. Then, I live here, I take a slider from the proposed addition out to the deck, and the deck attaches to the existing house and the addition.
Right, right, right. The deck attaches to the existing house.
Correct. It attaches to both.
Right, right, right. And there's no question the deck attaches to the existing house. What I'm looking at here, you're saying the deck is going to attach to the proposed addition. There's no question. The deck does attach to the existing house.
Alan.
And it doesn't show here.
I'm not building a deck. I don't even know why this is an issue.
Well, I think it's an issue because it's attached to what you're calling proposed.
Alan, that was the opening salvo in this. I think the confusion may be that the plot plan you're looking at, Alan, says proposed addition. Well, it's an old plot plan, so that proposed addition is actually already built.
And the deck.
Well, I can't find this acceptable, I'm sorry.
No, the deck, the deck is also built as well. That was part of the proposed addition. And like I said, I apologize for this confusion, but no, the deck is already there.
I know the deck is there, I saw the deck there.
Okay.
So Alan, I just want to clarify, the family suite is in the basement floor.
Yes.
Right.
So it's not, it's not part of the deck, it's not part of the family room, it's not part of the main house, so the family suite.
So, so why is it here in the first place?
Well, I'm sorry, what's that?
Why is it here in the first place? Why is he showing me on this plot plan, proposed addition?
Because of what happened is, if you look at the date of the plot plan, it says, and this is where the confusion's from, it shows that it's an old plot plan from 2004 that's already been approved, already been to the zoning.
I understand where you're coming from, Ellen. Ellen, I understand. Okay, I get it, I get it. So, so this proposed thing was something that happened a long time ago, and it's already existing.
Correct.
Yeah. Right, right. I get it, I get it, I get it, okay. That's not what I'm looking at here, though. That's not the, I understand just what you're saying, but that's not what you're putting in front of my plate right now. But I get it.
What's, what's, maybe that, Ellen can help you out. What's the confusion that, that it's, that, what's confusing you that, maybe I can help you out?
Are you addressing me?
Yeah, go on.
No, 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 I totally understand where you're coming from now. I get it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, no, I totally get it. However, the information that's in front of me doesn't show that, but I understand where everybody's coming from and what everything is said, okay? I personally don't think that this plan should be represented in this particular manner for us to approve, the way it is today. But that's my two cents.
So, Mr. Allen, if I might change the subject a little bit here. What exactly, so if the structure exists and we're not building anything new, what is changing that requires this to be a family suite? You know, why is it a family suite versus you just simply having your son live in your house?
Because it's going to be set off like a separate apartment for him. So, you know, by law, I'm supposed to get a permit, so I went for the permit, and to get the permit, I need to get a special permit for this type of case.
Okay, so it's basically redesignating a space that already exists. You're not knocking.
I'm not changing anything on the footprint, I'm not adding anything to the exterior, just the base.
Gotcha.
And you do understand that this isn't anything that ever can be used as rental income? When you go to list your house to sell it, you can't list it as a two-family or an in-law or anything?
Well, the house is already a two-family, but I do understand that this is specifically for the case of my family, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can I interrupt this for a second? How is this house already a two-family?
What do you mean? How is it already?
We bought it as a two-family.
Bought it as a two-family. It's been zoned as a two-family.
It's always been a two-family. It's been a two-family for 35 years. We bought it as such.
I drove by the house, it certainly appears to be a single-family home.
It does, that's the great thing about the house. It does appear to be a single-family, yet it is not.
So if it's a two-family, why are you coming to us for variance?
I'm not coming to you for variance, I'm coming to you for a special permit.
Slash a special permit.
Because that's what's required of me. I already have somebody living in the upstairs apartment.
So where's the apartment now?
Upstairs, yep. The middle door.
So then what you really want is create a two-family with an accessory apartment?
No, well, especially a family suite, right.
Well, whatever you want. But what we're talking about is we're going to have a two-family with a family suite.
Correct.
Okay. Or if you want to translate that, a three-family home.
No, a two-family, no, a two-family with a two.
A three-family home would require rezoning, wouldn't it?
And, Alan, the big difference is that you cannot use the family suite for rental income.
I understand that.
And, no, no, I understand, Mr. Allen, you do, I'm sorry, I'm talking to Mr. Kuscha, that the difference between this building, what's being proposed in a three-family, is that in a three-family, you could separately rent or sell all three pieces, whereas for this, you only have two pieces that you can actually generate income from.
Except for, I think we all know that when you list it, any potential buyer, any pictures anywhere, will show the setup of the family suite. That's the reality of it. Whether, I understand them advertising it as a two-family, and obviously, they wouldn't be able to mention anything about beyond suite, or anything along those lines, but typically, when these come to us, it's aging parents, you know, or, you know, 30, 40-year-olds bringing in their aging parents, not the situation where you're looking at someone right out of college, living underneath in essentially like their own apartment.
Yes, but that, yeah, I understand that, but that's the situation, and, and we also, I also have a brother who's a veteran, and, you know, it may come to that, too, an elderly brother. So, I mean, to have a family suite and to have a place where we can, you know, help our family and put them somewhere where they're not living right in our own home, works for us.
Yeah, Alexandria, just a reminder, we did something very similar about two or three meetings ago, where a family wanted to make a separate apartment for a child, and it was basically kind of the same circumstance.
No, let me say this. I don't see it. If they want the son to live with them, throw out the second-floor tenant and let the son move into that apartment. That's the way I see it. If it's a two-family, illegal two-family, let the son have the apartment upstairs.
Any other questions from the board? All right, looking up and down the table, again metaphorically, anything else from the board? Or shall there be a motion to close the public comment and move to deliberations?
I make a motion to close the public comment.
Motion made by Mr. Kuscha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded by Ron, thank you. And again, for the, for the record, I'm going to call the rule for all the votes. Mr. Fagan?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs? Mr. Kuscha?
Aye.
Ms. McIntyre?
I'm sorry, what do you call in the world for, to vote? Or, like, if I'm here? I don't.
Oh, so we have, we need a, we can't just do a voice vote because we don't actually have people or persons, so we don't know who's voting. This is merely the motion to close public comment and move to deliberations.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, aye.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre, I'm an aye, so we have five ayes to close public comment and move to deliberations. Now amongst the board, thoughts from everybody, anybody?
Yeah, I just want to, this is Mike List. I just want to add that I don't believe the laws around family suites specify age or condition. The exception here is that you simply cannot rent to the person that lives in the family suite. You know, you can't.
I don't believe that's the only condition.
No.
I think it has to be, it has to be a family relative.
That's right. Brothers, sisters, parents, grandparents, in-laws, and/or children of the residing owners.
Right, but it does not say that you can't have your son living there, and that it must be an elderly relative to Mr. Kuscha's point.
Nope, it does not say that. And any relatives that is a brother, sister, maternal parent, maternal grandparent, in-laws and/or children of the residing owners.
All right. My two cents is this. He can remodel his basement any way he chooses. However, he cannot put a kitchen in there. But if he decides to remodel his basement to put a bedroom, walk-in closet, even a second bath, over here, he's showing two bathrooms in the basement, okay? But let's say he decides to put bathrooms in the basement. As long as he doesn't put a kitchen in, he doesn't need a variance, and I don't see why we have to give him one.
Special permit.
Well, he's not looking for a variance. To be clear, he's only looking for a special permit which governs the use of the premises.
I don't see why we have to give him a special permit.
Well, but corollary to that, Alan, why not? I mean, there is no change in any zoning laws going on here. This is a decision that a family is making that doesn't affect the outward appearance of their property whatsoever. They are well aware that there is a general restriction on this.
Let me say this. All of, I'm in the real estate business. Once we grant these variances for special permits, they turn into be extra apartments, okay? And I've seen many listings in the Town of North Andover that have advertised, quote, "two families," and they're really, an illegal apartment that we've given a variance to. And I've asked the building inspector, not you, okay, okay, not you, okay, how do we enforce this? Okay? And the answer is almost, it's almost impossible to enforce it, okay? So how do we enforce it? We do it by not granting it on the original basis. No one is saying he can't, no one is saying he can't remodel that basement, okay? The only thing that he can't do with that basement is put a kitchen in. And he's got a two-family, too. If he's not concerned about the son, throw out the second-floor tenant, let the son live there.
I have to throw in, I think one of my concerns is, is I understand wanting to give the son maybe some privacy because he's a college graduate, I get that. But I can't, I have to, I have to go with Alan on this. I can't totally wrap my head around the kitchen part because normally, when we're talking about somebody who has a disability, or, you know, parents who are older, it's harder for them to walk up and down. So that does, that does make sense for a kitchen to be, you know, in the unit, in the area. I have a hard time grasping on this one. I think where it's already a two-family, I do get a little bit more concern of the enforcement and the use of it later on.
Yes, what I would chime in on something like that is that it is not the fault of the applicant that the enforcement perhaps comes up short on this. If there, if anybody on this board is having a problem with the enforcement of family suite regulations, then my suggestion is that we don't take it up with this particular applicant, that we take it up with the powers that be within the Town of North Andover. And in fact, I suspect that Mr. Hutchins would be happy to field a telephone call from any of us tomorrow or the day after. Tonight at a public meeting is certainly not the appropriate forum, but that is absolutely something that I think any of us could talk to the building inspector directly about since he is the zoning enforcement officer. And if you have some dissatisfaction with his performance, then speak to him directly. And if you do not want a zoning enforcement officer directly, then maybe you should talk to the town manager and/or the board of selectmen.
Well, let me say this.
Applicant, not the person who is responsible for the flaws and that you perceive.
I never said he was, okay?
And this applicant accountable for the failures that you perceive of the North Andover town government is beyond irresponsible.
You don't think it happens, Paul?
I don't hear.
You don't think, you don't ever look at any of these listings that say in-law apartment, mother-in-law apartment, in-law apartment, Paul? You don't think those listings are out there?
Hand in your retirement card and join the building department, and you can be the dedicated family suite enforcement officer in the Town of North Andover.
It's almost an impossible job to enforce.
We know where the family.
The higher building inspector said that. It's almost, okay, what are we supposed to do? Go through every real estate listing, okay? And see every real estate listing that says in-law apartment, and then show it to the building inspector and say, hey.
Anybody can't follow that catalog, then they shouldn't be talking about it.
Well, it's almost, anyways, Paul.
Aside from the enforcement aspect, I guess, why the mini apartment?
So, is the suggestion that because this is a young college graduate, he is less entitled to a family suite than somebody's infirm great-grandmother? Unfortunately, that's not part of the code.
Paul, no one is saying he can't remodel the, the basement.
No, I, I hear you loud and clear, he's not here to remodel the basement, he's here for a use. He is here for a family suite for his son, which is, by and with the code, which I'm staring at presently.
We all see things different, Paul, I guess. Let's put it to a vote.
It's, it's hard to see differently that a family suite, that the son of the, the owner of the principal unit is entitled to a family suite. There's no other way to read it. The code is black and white and in the four corners of a document that you can and should be reading. If you are not, then again, we are in the air quotes, "beyond irresponsible" category.
Yeah, Paul, I, I just have to echo what you're saying, I mean, this is a decision the family makes. Our decision is whether this is permissible or not, the family knows what the restrictions are, it is permissible. And why we would deny them the very kind gesture of supporting their son, uh, is, is beyond me.
Beyond me, too, but I do not drive the will of the board. I do not drive the ignorance of the board either.
Paul, Paul, I take offense to that statement. Paul, you keep your comments to yourself, Paul. Okay, Paul? I take offense to that statement, Paul.
I'm, I'm.
You're not calling all the shots, Paul, you're not the king. Okay, Paul, you're not the king, you're entitled to your opinion, Paul, but don't throw a cheap shot at me, Paul. Because that's, that's what that was, Paul, a cheap shot.
That sounds defensive, Alan.
Well, it is defensive, when somebody, okay, smears my integrity, Paul, okay, by using the words you use, I do get defensive, Paul.
I didn't say you were.
And I'm surprised, Paul, that somebody of your stature will stoop, will stoop to such low things, Paul, because now you've lost all esteem with me. Okay, I, you should be embarrassed, Paul, for saying that.
It, it's not much of a loss for me, Alan, your esteem.
Paul, whatever the case may be, Paul.
The code says.
Whatever the case may be.
Only be occupied by brothers, sisters, maternal parents and grandparents, in-laws and/or children of the residing owners. And the son is not disqualified? He's the son. He's the son. He's the child.
Put it to a vote, Paul.
Owner, it's in black and white, I'm trying to educate you. Paul, you're out of the ignorance.
Paul, 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 I guess we see things different, Paul. Paul, Paul, once, once we create accessory apartments, they get rented on the free market.
Interpretation for that line, share with me your interpretation of that line, share with me how we see that differently.
How, how we see it because of reality, Paul. Paul, we're talking what happens in real life, okay? When these people, God bless them, should they go to sell the house, there's an apartment down in that basement. And those people, the new owners, are gonna rent out that apartment, and they're gonna get income from the first floor, from their floor, and, and, and the second floor, Paul. Because there's gonna be an apartment down there, Paul. And that's the bottom line, Paul.
And, and, and guess what? Then, then there will be a violation.
Who's gonna catch him, Paul, you?
The zoning enforcement officer is charged with the duties of enforcing.
And he doesn't have enough to do, that he's gonna chase down, uh, listings, okay? Okay, that show accessory apartments.
Uh, since everybody's so offended, it's my assumption, I'm not going to speak for him, and I'm not even going to invite him into this conversation, but if I were the zoning enforcement officer, I would be offended at your characterization that I am incompetent.
No, 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 I never use those words in comparison, Paul, those words come out of your mouth. I never used those words, Paul, I was very careful with my selection of words.
Alan, 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 let me ask, let me ask you a question, have you always voted against this kind of special permit?
Yes, I have.
Because I don't, I don't, I don't recall that.
Who, who, who am I responding to?
Uh, this is Ron.
Uh, y- yes, for the most part, I always have.
For the most part, that's very different from always.
Well, 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 because I can't remember every vote that come in front of me, but I'm gonna say the majority of the, the times, Paul, uh, Ron, yes, I have. I've been consistent with this, Ron. But put it to a vote, if I say no, you still got four to beat me, so what's the big deal?
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion.
And the, the motion, motion is to head to a vote, generally speaking. Mr. Clerk, if you're, if you're unwilling to read in the affirmative, we can certainly assign it to someone else, I, I know you're clearly.
No, 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 I'm more than willing to be, to, to do my job.
Brilliant, thank you.
I make a motion, uh, let me see where I am. Okay, I make a motion to approve a special permit pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195 dash 1433V, for the purpose of constructing a family suite in the R4 zone, in the, in the R4 zoning district.
And just for the, for the purposes of formalities in record, Alan, if you would refer to the application, the petition of Arthur Allen in the preceding paragraph?
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Notice hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of, will hold a, uh, okay, will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, September 8th, to all parties interested in the petition of Arthur Allen for property at 369 Waverly Road, map 0.11, parcel 52, North Andover, Mass, in the R4 zoning district.
All right, I think we can. Good, I, I think that we can cobble together a motion to approve the special permit. Is there a second?
Uh, can I actually add to that, just with the clarification that, about the plot plan, just so there's no confusion, that this is an existing, Alan, existing house?
Okay, so this should be a notation in, in the decision that the plot plan, uh, uh, provided in the supporting materials is an outdated plot plan, and the proposed edition, so labeled, is actually an as-built edition.
Well, well, why don't we reference the, the plot plan dated 5/12/04?
Uh, fair, fair enough. Would you, would you mind reciting the, the balance of the exhibits, Alan?
Come again, Paul, what are you looking for?
Just looking for, to, to, uh, uh, lay out the names of all the exhibits that'll, that the, uh, so the, the, the motion is made pursuant to the, the exhibits.
Okay, I'll, I'd like to make, uh, I'd like to mention a, a, a proposed new basement floor plan dated July 22nd, 2020, drawn by a Martha McMinnis of 58 Region Avenue, Bradford, Mass. I also like to make mention of a plan of land in North Andover, prepared for an Arthur and Gina Allen dated 5/12/04, which there was some questions as to, uh, the timeliness of, of this plot plan. I mean, does that sound good, the timeliness?
Yeah.
And, and, uh, what else is there? I'm, I'd like to make mention of, uh, an existing condition basement floor plan dated July 22nd, 2020, drawn by a, uh, Martha McMinnis, 58 Region Avenue, Bradford, Mass.
That's, that's one, right in the bottom right?
Right, the bottom left, right?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, if you look at it in a portrait view. And how about, how about the, there, there, I think there are what, one, two other three, four pages?
Yeah, but they really don't have anything to do with this, uh, thing, right? I mean, we're talking about the basement, what do we care about a first-floor plan? I mean, I'll mention them, okay, but I don't see how the first-floor, second-floor plan have anything to do with the basement and what we're granting.
All right, just, just, uh, we, we, generally speaking, just include all of the exhibits that have been supplied by the, by the applicant.
Okay, okay, then I'll also like to mention existing first-floor plan, uh, labeled X2, writ, drawn by a Martha McMinnis of 58 Region Avenue, Bradford. I'd also like to make mention of the existing second-floor plan dated July 22nd, uh, labeled X3, drawn by a Martha McMinnis, 58 Region Avenue, Bradford.
Perfect, I, I think that captured everything, did, did we miss anything, members of the board? So. Motion made, uh, with a, with a notation regarding the date of the plot plan, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
That was Ron?
Yes.
Motion made, and that I will call the roll, Mr. Fagan?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Kusia?
No.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
And I am an aye, so we have a vote of four, two, one, the special permit is approved. Uh, thank you all, and good luck, Mr. Alan. Thank you, Mr. Alan, good for the board.
Thank you, sir's and misses, and we appreciate your time, and, and, thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Next item on the agenda is, I'm flipping pages, I apologize to you all, 59 Willow Ridge Road, do we have a petitioner on the line for 59 Willow Ridge?
Yes, Stephen Brunz is here, of 59 Willow Ridge.
Brilliant, thank you, Mr. Kusia will open the hearing, and then we will get, uh, some more questions. Mr. Kusia, would you read the notice, please?
Be my pleasure. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 7:30 PM, to all parties interested in the petition of Stephen Breen's, am I saying it correctly? Brian's?
Uh, Brunz.
For property, for property at 59 Willow Ridge Road, map 107 point D, parcel 90, North Andover, Mass, or 1845, in the R2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195, 7 point, 7 point 3B, table 2, the mentioned requirements for one-side setback in the R2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a 12-by-18 storage shed. Specifically, applicant has requested a right-side setback needing a relief variance of 18 feet, the side setback proposed is 12 feet, and the side setback required is, the side setback required per table 2 is 30 feet. Applicant, app, application and supporting materials are available for review by appointment at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Cog Jr., Esquire, Chairman.
Well, and, and again, the flourish, thank you very much, Mr. Kusia.
My pleasure.
Mr. Brunz, I, I believe you said you were here?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you, and, uh, if you were here for the previous application, then you may have heard that, that this, uh, this remote hearing stuff is extraordinarily unsatisfying for, uh, myself and the board members, I'm, be unsatisfied for you, it's gonna be very cumbersome, uh, but we will hopefully get through it together. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on in your application?
Sure, so thanks, everybody, for your time tonight, um, I'm looking to put in a 12-by-18 shed on blocks, um, after living here for 18, 19, 20 months, whatever it's been now, um, and trying to get a feel of, you know, the space in the, the house and all of that. So I'm at a point where I, I need a mobile, uh, shed on blocks. And, um, as you kind of look at the property and the plot, um, it's, you know, a little bit of a narrow plot, it's not extremely narrow, but, um, it starts to become a question of exactly where, um, it kind of makes no sense to, to place a set, a shed, um, especially kind of taking into factor, you know, walking distance back and forth to the home. So today, I'm here for the setback variance, um, for 18 feet of relief on the one side, the west side. And part of the, the natural placement that I kind of selected for this, it is a clearing, as I noted in the kind of cover letter that I wrote with the application here, um, that whole side of our property, the west side, um, in the rear, is, you know, containing a lot of those beautiful large trees out of Carroll Parker, they kept that, and existing boulders, um, as well. And so, yeah, that's kind of where I, I came to realization that's a, a natural spot to put it, that, um, not kind of basically in the, the center of our usable lawn, um, as you kind of factor in the other sides from being outside of the 30 feet. So, um, I will kind of leave it at that.
So in, in sum, I think I'm hearing that you, you need to, uh, to put a shed in the backyard, and the setback requirement is 30 feet, you're, uh, only, uh, only able to setback 12 feet, which means you're looking for a variance of 30 feet. Can you, can you tell me why it's, uh, why it's, uh, hard to achieve a 30-foot setback on the side there?
Yeah, so if, um, you go about 10 feet or so, um, to the front of the shed, which would be more towards the center of the property, that's where those large trees are, you know, placed. So, obviously, that puts me at, uh, 32 feet, or, I'm sorry, 34 feet, um, and a 4-foot shed is really not a very usable shed.
Okay, so in, uh, on this, uh, on the, the right side, what is this? It's actually the, the western side of the parcel, it looks like. If you move more to the, if you move 15 feet to the center, then you're in a stand of trees, is that what you're, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, that's correct. And then beyond the stand of trees, kind of in the center through our lawn, extending backward, um, southerly, it's, you know, open lawn space.
Anything from the board?
Um, I have quest, a question, and I'm sorry to make you ignorant on this, but maybe somebody else on the board can enlighten me as to, if this is a shed on blocks, it's not a permanent structure, is a variance required?
I don't think whether it matters, it matters if it's on blocks or not, I think a structure is a different definition, I refer to the, um, the inspector, I don't know if you're, um, huh, so a structure as opposed to a, a structure on wheels is a, is a big, is a difference. I can't give you that technical term, I think the inspector can better than I can.
That's Paul. Paul, you're urinating out, I couldn't understand it.
That sounded better.
Okay, sorry, um, it doesn't matter how attached, how placed, it, it, the structure, but isn't, is it, is it.
I think folks need their microphones, this is, there's a few others, people sort of interrupting the speech pattern.
But, a, any better now, is anybody, um, kind of muted?
That sounded better, that, that was a, like a, a good three or four seconds we got from you, that was better, let's, let's try one more time.
It, like I said, it doesn't matter how it's attached, structure is what it's made of and what the purpose of it is, uh, like I said, even a tent is a, a structure which requires permanent. Uh, in our definition of structure, it definitely has sheds in it, anything of shelter, a bridge is a structure, um, so it, it, it falls under the structure category. Like, it doesn't matter if it's on block, if it does forest lab, um, and how it's attached in it is up to his discretion, uh, but it is, you know, like I said, it's definitely not a category of structures.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just one quick question of the applicant, so, I mean, you, you said why it doesn't go in the front, and did you just explain the, like, it's in your letter, but just for clarification, why it doesn't go back behind your deck, more towards the middle of the block lines?
Sure, yeah, so, um, you know, kind of like I talked about, you know, extending south from the house, um, is, is open space area, um, you know, functionally, right? You know, buying an acre of, of land, I don't think putting a shed almost directly in. in the back lawn, um, is desirable use for, for the back lawn. But, you know, the east side, like I talked about, um, you know, I, I could put it on the east side, um, but again, based on where the water well is, there's another stand of trees, um, south of that, so higher up in the plan, um, as well as a playground area, kind of where it says lot area, 1.036 acres there in the center. So again, if I didn't want to go right in the center of the lawn, I'd be here for a variance just on the other side, um, of the property.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, another question, because again, I, I do not have a chance to look at this firsthand, uh, so I apologize for that, but what is on, again, what I'm looking at here is the right of your, of your lot line? The neighbor there, how close is the neighbor?
Yeah, to the right is, uh, another property, um, with the home. I don't know the exact measurements of how far away they are from the property line. I would imagine more than 30 feet, um, but it's kind of in that, you know, the, the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, the lines for the signatures.
And are they aware? Are they, are they aware of this?
Yes, they, they are aware and, um, it, so they have a, a pool in the back portion of their lot as well, um, which they've actually run, um, so the property line does have a, we actually have a fence, um, from previous homeowners, um, that runs the property line. And then on their property, um, right at the location of where the shed begins running to the back of the property, um, is a whole line of some sort of shrubs, 20-foot shrubs, um, that have been there for many years. So it is kind of concealed, so it's not, you know, exposed to them. It also is the garage side of their home, um, so it's not the side of the home where they have a living room that's looking over towards our property or anything like that.
Any other thoughts from the board for the applicant?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
That was Mr. Kusia making the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. McIntyre, I'm second. I will go up the roll. Mr. Fagan?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Dr. Kusia?
Aye.
Ms. McIntyre?
Aye.
Thank you, I am an aye. So we have clue, we have unanimously closed public comment. We shall move to deliberation. Any, uh, any, anyone want to kick it off?
I have no problems with it.
Do, Mr. Kusia, anyone else have any thoughts they want to share?
I, I think ideally I would have liked a, a, like, letter of support from the neighbor, but also given the fact that they haven't objected, I, you know, I view that as sort of the most relevant person because it's not particularly close to anyone else's properties.
You, you make a good point with that, Mr. List. I should ask, uh, Jen, Jen, have we received any public comment on this matter?
No.
Thank you, Jen. So absolutely hearing no objection from the, uh, from the neighbors. A helpful piece. Any other thoughts from the board? All right, well, seeing and hearing none, then, Mr. Kusia, shall you recite a motion?
It'd be my pleasure. I'd like to make a motion to approve a petition from Stephen Burns for prop, for property at 59 Willow Ridge Road, map 107D, parcel 90, North Andover, Mass. in the R2 zoning district, uh, to approve a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195, 7.3B, table 2, dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a 12 by 18 storage shed. Specifically, applicant has requested a right-side setback needing a relief variance of 18 feet. The side setback proposed is 12 feet. The side setback required per table 2 is 30 feet.
Are there any, any conditions that the board wishes to add to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, then, Mr. Kusia, would you just, for the purposes of the record, kindly identify the plot plan?
I would like to identify the plot plan as presented to the Board of Appeals, uh, prepared by Sullivan Engineering Group, uh, of Woburn, Mass. dated 8/12/20, uh, that shows the, uh, proposed, the, uh, shed.
Thank you very much for that. Motion made by Mr. Kusia. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. McIntyre, second. I'll run up the roll. Mr. Fagan?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Kusia?
Aye.
Ms. McIntyre?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so that the variance is unanimously approved. Thank you all, and Mr. Brun?
Thank you very much.
With that, everybody, there is nothing else on the, uh, on the agenda as posted, so we are ripe for a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
That was Ron making the motion. Is it second?
I'll second.
Oh, there was a race. I heard Ms. McIntyre. Motion made and seconded by Ms. McInt- Oh, Mr. Fagan?
After, I'm followed by you, aye.
You, Mrs., uh, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Kusia?
No problem with me.
Ms. McIntyre?
Aye.
And I am an aye. A unanimous vote to adjourn. Thank you all for your time tonight.